I would like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of March 17th, which will also include the successor agency of the ACIA. I'd like to wish everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could please have a moment of silence to pray along with the family and friends of Billy Engel and pray for his recovery. And usually, I do not pray during this invocation, leaving those messages to clergy. However, this evening, we will pray first for those who have contracted the virus and for those who have perished. Secondly, we pray for a quick demise of the virus. And thirdly, for those less fortunate who are feeling the financial impact of the disease, I pray that landlords of both commercial and residential properties will find it in their hearts and pocketbooks to provide some form of relief in this time of need, if they can, and that business owners assist their employees, if at all possible. I pray that parents who are now unemployed or underemployed will take this time to spend quality time with their children. I pray that we continue to prove our commitment to one another as our island family and reach out with your heart, not your hand, to assist with those most vulnerable to the disease, offering whatever assistance may be needed. Amen.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Hapes.
Here.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Mayor Potem Cassidy.
Here.
Mayor Marshall. Here. City managers.
Scott Campbell says that he's calling in. Do you have...how will you know?
He hasn't called in yet.
Okay. All right. Before we have the...
Okay, I'm gonna put this phone on mute as I've been instructed to.
Good.
Okay, before we have our presentation this evening from the Catalina Island Medical Center, I just wanted to let the public know that this is our first of many, I'm sure, to have the public's interaction with us remotely, so I'm sure that there are going to be some hurdles for us to go through, so please be patient with us as we go through this process. And I want to make sure that the public knows that you can field questions in by going to an email, ask@cityofavalon.com, so it's just A-S-K@cityofavalon.com, and that will be monitored through this, so if there's oral communication during different agenda items. And at the end of this presentation, at the beginning, we do have a hard stop time of one hour for the question and answers. And then the other way is you can call 310-510-0220, and the extension is 100. And we have a lovely operator that's answering those phone calls, and please keep your questions to 300 words or less. And with that, I'm going to introduce Dr. Daniel Davis, and we also have Dr. Amy Warren in the audience for this presentation.
All right. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to come speak to you. Unfortunately, it's not under the best of circumstances, but I hope to shed some light on what's going on, both globally as well as locally here in Catalina and at the Catalina Island Medical Center, and then use this as a vaulting ground for, hopefully, allowing Catalina Island Medical Center to become a stronger part of the community, and particularly with regard to public information and coordinating some of the public health activities. You may have seen me...
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you try to talk as close as you can into the microphone?
Sure.
As you move, the audience and those on TV can't hear us.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
So you may have seen me either in the emergency department or down in the clinic, but there are some other aspects of my career that give me a unique perspective on this particular issue. One, that I'm the medical director for the Mercy Air Helicopters that service Catalina Island. I'm also the medical director for Riverside County Fire Department, and between the two of those, I've spent most of my time recently on conference calls trying to figure out how to respond to this pandemic. In addition...
It's all right, it's his.
Yes.
In addition, I have actually had grant support from the government to work on surge response. And so I can say from my own experience that it has been a real pleasure to work with the team at Catalina Island Medical Center, and I have to say that this has probably been the most coordinated and energetic effort to try and respond to something that really is unprecedented in certainly our lifetimes and in many ways in human history. And so with that as the backdrop, what I intend to cover, and then allow time for questions, is to talk a little bit about the virus and why this is a bit different than what we've seen before, go over some of the challenges that are unique to both Avalon and Catalina, as well as the hospital in particular, and then some of the solutions that are falling into place, but also some of the ways that we can engage the community. So let's first talk about the virus, the coronavirus which causes the disease that now goes by the name COVID-19. You'll often hear the term novel used to describe it, and that's a key factor in understanding why this is different, because this really represents a mutation, as opposed to what we see every year with influenza, where there's really just a slight change year over year. And for most of us, our immune systems recognize influenza in some form, and that keeps us from getting particularly sick. This is something new to us. We've had coronaviruses before, but nothing like this one. And so for all of us, this is brand-new, which makes the race for a vaccine all the more important, but also explains some of the disease that we see. This is a particularly difficult transmission model, because it has a long incubation period where there may be a period where there's absolutely no or minimal symptoms, but there's still shed of virus that allows transmission. So that means you could potentially catch this from somebody who was not showing much in the way of symptoms. It appears to be relatively stable, at least for a period of days in the environment, and we don't know yet whether it's going to be affected by a change in the weather. The best guess that we have is by watching what happens in countries like Singapore and Australia, where they have had some disease, so it's not completely eradicated by warmth. But probably the most salient feature is the fact that it tends to want to go down into the lungs. This is not your typical cold that comes through and causes stuffy nose and maybe a little bit of bronchitis, but in a certain percentage of people, it dives into the lungs and causes what you'll hear as ARDS, or acute respiratory distress syndrome, which can be fatal, particularly to the older or the vulnerable population. And here's a requisite picture of somebody spreading some sort of virus there, which hopefully will impact you to the point where you'll start to take some of the precautions more seriously. Now, here are some data that document how much more virulent and potentially higher mortality that COVID has as compared to what we're used to. What you see on the far left on each side is the flu, which has a relatively low mortality, particularly in the United States, of 0.1%, as opposed to what we see with this COVID, which depending on which country we look at, can be anywhere from just under 2% that we're seeing in the United States, up to over 6 or 7% like what we've seen in Italy. We still don't completely understand why it's behaving differently in Italy than in China, but that may have to do with the idea of capacity that we'll come back to. But one of the unique features of this virus is how it affects the older, most vulnerable population. At first, the thought was that for some reason, it was preferentially picking on older people. Now the thought is perhaps because it is a novel virus and that nobody's seen it before, that the older folks who might have built up an immunity to things like influenza don't have anything to protect them, and because they're overall more frail than the younger population, that we're seeing mortality rates that exceed 15, even 20% in the older population, as opposed to the very youngest. And so that will come back when we talk about what we should be thinking about as a community and how we should be protecting the most vulnerable. So what can you expect from this? Well, you've heard a lot about this in the last few days, the idea that prevention, trying to prevent the spread, is our initial line of defense, and that includes the social distancing that you see by all of us in this room right now, the emphasis on hand washing, covering a cough and a sneeze, wiping off surfaces, staying home and avoiding social situations that have gone from only large events now to anywhere where more than 10 people may be gathering. The symptoms can start up to 14 days after exposure, although the average is shorter than that, about five days. And the initial symptoms are almost always fever with body aches and some form of a respiratory syndrome that usually includes cough, and then after about a week, shortness of breath. It's not a particularly fast-acting virus, which is good from the standpoint that we have opportunity to try to rescue these patients. It's bad from the standpoint of there's ample opportunity to spread this around, particularly given that the first four to five days may be with minimal symptoms. Now, I do want to talk about testing, in part because this has been an issue both locally and certainly on the national level. And there are really two strategies when it comes to testing. The ideal is that you have specific therapy, and so identifying the pathogen is important in being able to identify the optimal treatment. That really isn't the case with this coronavirus, not yet. There are some medications that are being tried, that are being borrowed from the HIV world, that are being borrowed from the autoimmune disease world of all places, but none of these are considered standard of care and are really being used either as a compassionate use protocol or as experimental therapy. The other reason to aggressively test has to do with the idea of containment, and this is where you'll see dramatic differences in the United States' response versus other places, and Singapore is being used as sort of shining star, where if you can identify the very earliest cases and contain them, you can prevent spread within a community. But you'll see that that cat may have already escaped the bag for us in the United States. The criteria for testing, I'm going to come back to, this is a moving target, so as of about 15 minutes ago, I have the latest, but it will likely change before I even finish this presentation. Now, you will hear a lot of talk about spreading out or blunting or widening the spread of the virus in the community. And the idea is that what we're trying to do here, in addition to protect the most vulnerable patients, is to protect the healthcare resources, because this is coming very close and in some countries has exceeded the capacity of the healthcare system to care for these patients. And when that occurs, we see mortality go up dramatically, and that's what we think has happened in Italy, where patients who belong in an intensive care unit are being parked in someone's office because there's no space for these patients. If you allow a virus to run through a community unchecked, you will see a very sharp spike. It may decrease the total duration of the pathogen in the community, but you can see on the left-hand side that it exceeds the healthcare system's capacity and dramatically increases mortality. So what we're really trying to do is blunt and prolong the exposure, so that we never exceed the healthcare system's capacity and can always rescue the patients who are able to be rescued. And interestingly, we're looking back more than 100 years at the lesson for this, where with the 1918 flu, we have a tale of two cities, Philadelphia and St. Louis. In Philadelphia, they delayed about two weeks between the onset of the first case and the implementation of the same sort of social distancing that we're seeing right now in the United States, whereas St. Louis waited only two days before implementing these. And you can see the dramatically different response, that in Philadelphia, it was a very short but incredibly intense response that led to a huge number of deaths as compared to St. Louis, where they never exceeded the healthcare system capacity. So we've had experience with this even here in the United States, and unfortunately, may or may not have learned the lessons from about 100 years ago. So in the United States, there have been attempts to limit the spread. We've seen that fairly aggressively over the last three or four days, and I think there will be a lot of discussion about whether that came fast enough, or when we get to the idea of testing, whether that was implemented quickly enough. But we are now at a point where the society has attempted to limit the spread through a fairly aggressive quarantine, and I think, you know, that's been a lot in the news, so we don't need to talk about that specifically. The question is whether we waited perhaps a little too long and whether we missed an opportunity to use testing to try and contain the initial cases, and whether at this point we're still looking at the tip of the iceberg. We'll get back to the issue of lack of equipment and limited healthcare capacity, and then there's a lot of other interesting things that we don't have time for, but this idea that has become popular amongst sociologists, that for some reason, Americans think we're an exception to every rule, and that what happens in Italy and France and China won't happen here. And certainly, we've seen this whole thing become politicized and sensationalized in the media. There are some data, though, and I really would like to thank Johns Hopkins, because they've taken a lead in the world in documenting what's happening. Here you see the amount of testing per capita, so per citizen in the United States, where in the United States, up until this point, there were only 23 tests run per million citizens, as compared to places like South Korea, where you'll see their curve in a second here, where they've tested fully 150 times more of their citizens to try and contain the virus, rather than simply just to identify the sickest cases. And this is what has everyone a little bit concerned, or I should say, a lot concerned, because there have really been two types of countries emerging out of this. There have been those that have been proactive and take an aggressive approach that involves public health, rapid identification of early cases, and isolation or sequestration to avoid spread, versus those who perhaps let the horse get out of the barn and got too far along before aggressive measures were used to try to quarantine, and by then, the number of cases in the community were already too great. Now, the United States is indicated there in pink, and you can see that at this point, we are clearly in the group that waited too long and did not adequately contain the virus. The hope, though, is what you see in South Korea, which is up toward the top there, and followed the same trajectory that we're on now, but we're able to bend the curve and limit spread through their aggressive maneuvers. And we really took a page out of their playbook in the way that we at least approached the shutting down of the society and limiting social interactions. So the hope is that over the next week, we will see our curve follow South Korea's curve, and that we'll see the number of cases start to wane, as opposed to what you see in Italy, where it continues to rise. And I'll point out that that's not a...that's a logarithmic curve, so that every uptick there is representing tens of thousands of patients when you get to the very top. Okay, so what do we have in Catalina? Well, these are some figures that you may or may not know, but that I pulled off from census data, that we have a higher population of senior citizens over the age of 65, is the definition used here, versus the closest other metropolis in Long Beach, 14% versus 11%. We also have a higher population of dependent old people, which is a complicated definition, but essentially says that these are not only just senior citizens, but they're senior citizens who do not have an income related to their own working or employment, and you can see it's quite a bit higher than in Long Beach. We also have a fairly high density compared to other parts of California, and that has relevance when it talks to how things spread. There are also huge access issues, both getting supplies in and getting people, particularly patients, out, and that can be influenced by weather, or our biggest fear that there's going to be a lack of places to send them on the mainland, and that we may get stuck with patients. Or, as we've seen, we didn't anticipate a lack of supplies related to private citizens hoarding particular things, but even now, there's challenges getting particular items like surgical masks, because the general populace has gobbled them up. We also have a high level of exposure to international tourism, and particularly the cruise ships, which, when I was first asked to do this, was thought to be a big part of what we would be discussing, but at this point, they appear to be at least on a 30-day hiatus. CIMC, the medical center, has some unique challenges of its own. It is a multi-use facility, and so within the same four walls, we have the emergency department, acute care beds, a clinic, physical therapy, occupational therapy, and a skilled nursing facility. And they share entrances, laboratories, facilities, radiology, and really importantly, for understanding where we're going, they share clinical staff. We also have a limited surge capacity. If you are a 1,000-bed hospital, you can easily absorb hundreds of patients. When you are a dozen-bed hospital, then even small surges can affect your capacity. That includes the number of beds. It certainly includes the personal protective equipment that you've heard about on the news. Ventilators is a critical issue if we end up not being able to transfer patients who are critically ill and are on, have been intubated, and are requiring some form of positive pressure ventilation, because after a couple of patients, we will have exceeded our ventilators. Certain medications, and then staff, where some of the lessons we've learned from Italy are that we should expect a certain percentage of clinical staff to get sick with the virus and be unable to care for patients. And then the critical access issue means that for many things, we have to send out our tests, and that includes any sort of testing right now anyways for the coronavirus, that there can be delays for supplies coming in, and then again, certainly evacuation challenges. So let me tell you about some of the things that have already fallen into place just in the last couple of days. And in addition to Jason and to Amy here, we've had tremendous leadership from our partnership with UC Irvine and Dr. Sicaria in coming up with a plan that hopefully will work for us here, and that includes access to personal protective equipment, medications. We'll talk a little more about the tests and even bringing in external ventilators. Starting to become creative about the use of what I would call non-traditional staff, so for instance, using a physical therapist in a role as sort of a nurse assistant or as a screening tool to be able to deliver medications in the community, things that they weren't necessarily trained to do, but have been impressively willing to do. Partnering with EMS and making sure that they're engaged, so that they know what our plan is, and can even help with some of the triaging. Creating essentially three hospitals with separate entrances. One, which sequesters our nursing home population, which if you learned anything from the initial experience in the United States, it's that nursing homes are not only full of vulnerable patients, but they're an ideal place for the virus to spread. And I think it would be a disaster if we had an infection of our sniff patients, so we have to work particularly hard to protect them and sequester them, not only physically, but even with the staff going in and out, and even with regard to their own families. Infectious patients should be kept separate from non-infectious patients, and we have a fairly steady stream of significant illness just because of the age and comorbidities of our population. And we certainly don't want to take a patient having a stroke or a myocardial infarction and then expose them to the coronavirus on top of that. So that has created some challenges, but that we think we've overcome that by creating, again, essentially, three different hospitals that will be as much as possible staffed separately on any given day to avoid cross-contamination. We've immediately started experimenting and have, I think, been fairly successful with telehealth, which includes not only the traditional things that we've done here using web-based interactions, but even talking to patients on the phone and trying to perform visits without having to bring them into the hospital, particularly of their high risk. And then even sending hospital and EMS staff into the community to do things like deliver medications, check on patients, and perform wound care and other types of interventions. All right, so let's get to the testing strategy issue. One option, and this is actually what's being done at most academic hospitals still, even when there is access to some testing, is that because of delays in the testing results, there's an assumption of a positive test, particularly if other viruses have tested negative. So with a critically ill patient with respiratory symptoms and fever, who's not influenza-positive and has no other respiratory viruses, you can assume that that patient is positive and treat them presumptively, including the isolation procedures. And that's what even university hospitals are doing right now, because it can take them up to a week to get results, even in their most critically ill patients. The CDC does have guidelines, which I'll show you here in a second, and we're leaning on these as testing becomes more readily available, with the recognition that people want to know if they have this. And so I would say to most people, you're going to do okay, even if you do have it, and that there's nothing that we have to offer you therapeutically that we wouldn't offer even if you were negative. So the idea of satisfying curiosity at this point in time isn't enough, because the testing is so limited. But as testing becomes more available, the criteria that we'll lean on will parallel what the CDC recommends, which at this point means that you have to have fever and some sort of respiratory illness, and that could be cough or shortness of breath, and one of the following: either you're admitted to the hospital, you are older and have some sort of comorbidity that puts you at particular risk of mortality, you're a healthcare worker who's caring for suspected or confirmed patients, or you are a general citizen who's been in contact with a confirmed patient, or you've traveled from a high-risk country. So it has to be fever with respiratory symptoms and one of those other things, and that will then trigger an order from a provider, either a physician or a nurse practitioner. And even when the test is sent, our understanding is that the laboratory, because it's such a limited resource at this point, is prioritizing certain patients. Now, hopefully, that will change over the next several days to weeks, and we will be able to test just as aggressively as we might for influenza. But I don't see a point in the near future where results will be back within two to three days, probably more like four to five days, which really limits our ability to make clinical decisions with the results. So I go back to what I started with. Our default is going to be that we assume that you're positive if the influenza test and other virus tests are negative, and will isolate accordingly. That will include patients who are in the hospital, either admitted or being observed in the emergency department, and that should include patients who are sent home, that we will not be able to tell you, even in the next few weeks, whether you are definitely positive or negative. Even with a positive test, there's additional confirmatory testing done at the level of the CDC and public health, and so you aren't going to get data back even when there's ample testing available, at least not in the near future. And so we have to assume that you're positive. And even if you were negative, if you have fever and respiratory symptoms, you have something, and that something is something that you really don't want to pass on to other people, particularly those older patients. So there's not a lot that changes with the knowledge of positive versus negative, other than at a public health level. And I realize people want to know, and I realize there's a lot of concern and anxiety, and that's part of what we'll talk about next, but please understand that this has been a limited resource, that we're doing the best that we can, the labs that we work with are doing the best that they can in prioritizing the patients who we think need this the most, and that hopefully, at some point over the next month or two, we'll be able to be a little more aggressive in the testing. Other things that we've talked about, so I mentioned this at the beginning, but a role for Catalina Island Medical Center is really the center for public health in this community to a greater degree than it's been before. And that will include coordinating, tracking, and testing of patients, monitoring their clinical progress, because our hope is that most people that we presume are positive will be managed at home, and that there will be regular contact with personnel from the medical center if we feel like we need a clinical evaluation, either If we feel like we need a clinical evaluation, either send someone out or bring the patient in, but that we can keep most of these people away from the hospital and do that safely in a role that we haven't had before. And then communicating, already there's links on our website. We're hoping that things like this presentation will be available, not just to others right now in real time, but after the fact, and our intent is to be able to produce some kind of an update on a twice-weekly basis so that we can keep the community informed about things like the number of cases in the United States, in California, and hopefully not, but on Catalina Island, and the availability of testing. And then I think as we go forward, we'll be working through considerations like when to reopen hotels and restaurants, whether and when to allow the cruise ships back, what point schools will start to be held in person rather than virtually, and then truly focusing on our elderly population. And that brings up my very last point. You'll hear it on the news, you'll hear it from politicians, I hope that I don't come off as having a political agenda, but as a scientist and as a physician, this is a critical point. This is right at the juncture where we decide whether we go the way of South Korea and get a handle on this thing and never see the healthcare system taxed to the point of overcapacity, or we follow the suit of Italy where patients are being managed inside office buildings and patients die who should never have died, and that's where we'll see mortality rates that are two to threefold higher than they should have been. And so that means that everybody has to act in a way that protects Catalina and particularly the most vulnerable patients. As much as you want to go see your elderly parents, you have to protect them as best that you can, and I would encourage everyone to lean on us to provide guidance, that we're trying to find either virtual ways to interact with patients like at our nursing home, our social workers, and our mental health professionals have already started reaching out to the elderly in the community to make sure they feel engaged, that they're not anxious and afraid. And so we really want to take that leading role so that we can protect them, because all it's going to take is one person going over town to Costco to load up on their toilet paper and come back with the virus that they don't realize that they've contracted and pass it to one person in the nursing home or one of the seniors, and that suddenly what has been Singapore up until now becomes our own version of Italian hell. And so work with us. Call, we're very much trying to coordinate things via phone, and this is a moving target, and I really have been impressed with the leadership of Jason and Dr. Sicaria in pushing this forward to where in two days, we have an operational system that's up and running. Check the website, and then I came up with this about five minutes before I came down. Be a patient, patient. Understand that this is unprecedented in our lifetimes, and we're doing the best that we can, everyone is, and I've been amazed at people's courage and their leadership and energy in trying to do the right thing. So with that, I will take whatever questions that I can possibly answer, and I've got some backup on either side of me here.
Do we have questions at the council before maybe calls start coming in? I thought that was very thorough, and I really appreciate the work that CIMC is doing. That's incredible. Are we getting any calls?
I have a question.
I'll take thorough as a compliment. Could go either way.
Let's just say somebody, somebody has the virus. What happens then?
So we would like to be the ones to coordinate that, even if they traditionally get their primary care over town. We would like to know that they exist, and we would like to start coordinating with our expectation that 90% of those patients can stay at home and be monitored remotely. The disease, as far as we can tell, progresses relatively slowly, that over the first week, it looks like the flu, it feels like the flu, and in most patients, they will resolve and feel much, much better after three or four days. There are some specific things we're learning, like to use Tylenol rather than Ibuprofen, and other than select patients with reactive airways disease like asthma or COPD, to avoid the use of steroids, and we're trying to keep up with the latest recommendations from both China and Italy on those fronts. And so we'd like to coordinate some of that care, keep the patients at home, and in the second week is when they become particularly vulnerable to this unusual inflammatory condition that only affects a subset, a 15% to 20%, where shortness of breath increases, and ultimately, the patient can develop an ARDS, which is Advanced Acute Respiratory Distress Syndrome. Those are the patients that we may need to send someone out to check an oxygen saturation and measure their respiratory rate, or coordinate on the phone and ask them how they're doing once or twice a day, and make a decision as to when they need to come in. So just because you're positive doesn't mean you need to panic and come to the hospital, but you need to touch base with us because we want to coordinate all of the care that goes from that point forward, and make sure that patients are managed at home whenever possible, but that they're also safe and that we don't let a patient get too far along, which is the other mistake, where they get too sick before there's a medical intervention. And that's what we're trying to set up, is the ability to monitor that and intervene at the right time.
Would it be safe to say that from that small 15% to 20% subset, the other 85 percentile, generally speaking, would go through what would feel like a flu and come through it on the other side?
Absolutely, and in fact, probably 15% to 20% may not even realize they were sick. They may have thought, I drank too much last night and I feel a little hungover, and then the next day feel great. And so we think there are asymptomatic or minimally symptomatic carriers out there that are a part of why it's spreading through the community. And so the group that has that flu-like illness is probably somewhere around 50% or 60%, but that they recover just like they would from influenza.
Okay, our first question is from John Borghegina, Bluewater Avalon. Does the local government expect mass evictions in the weeks and months ahead? If so, how do we restaff our business once the pandemic ends?
I missed one of the words. Does the local government expect massive?
Mass evictions in the next?
Mass evictions. I don't know that that's a medical question, so I might turf that one.
I think one of the concerns that's out there, and if I'll just share from a few texts and things that I've received from the community, is that because our restaurants are shut down and tourism is virtually nonexistent at this moment, there are a lot of layoffs that are happening, and the community, our community members are concerned about whether or not they'll be able to make rent payments. And in some cases, landlords have not been readily available to assist with their tenants. And I know that Governor Newsom has put some information out there that suggests stronger rules as far as how landlords and if landlords could evict their tenants. So I think that's part of the uncertainty, but there are some regulations that are being formulated right now. Additionally, I believe the state has also waived the one-week waiting period for unemployment and underemployment. So my encouragement would be go to EDD, E D D dot C A dot G O V, and you can file claims in several different languages if you are of the subset who have underemployment or unemployment.
And one of the things that I can offer from a medical perspective, we're watching very closely what happens in other countries, because one of the models is, and you'll hear the statistics quite a bit, that 50% to 70% of us will contract this virus before all is said and done, but it may take several years. And so the natural conclusion is, are we going to kind of, you know, go down into our burrows for several years and come out once it's safe, or the hope is that a vaccine will emerge? The ideal situation would be that we start seeing countries where the rates of new infections taper off, allow businesses to reopen, and return to normal life, that we hope to see the virus decrease its activity as the months get warmer, and that actually, just this week, the first patient started undergoing testing for a virus that, in the most optimistic predictions, could actually, you know, hit certain high-risk patients like these vulnerable patients and older patients as early as the end of the summer. So if that were the case, we would see relatively low transmission through the summer, and then a point where it becomes a little bit more like the flu, because we don't have to be so protective of those older patients because they're starting to get vaccinated. And that would be the most rapid return to normal life that we could envision, and I think that's everyone's goal. But that's something we can update on, because this is definitely a moving target.
And I believe this is for council. Will Avalon create a food bank for our children in most vulnerable?
Well, currently, the schools are serving breakfast and lunches. I know that for sure. There is a food bank at the church, and I don't know if somebody could add to that. Community church. And there also, there is going to be food prepared in Avalon that can be delivered, or takeout and that kind of thing, so. And I think, I don't know how many people are actually shutting themselves in, but I think there's, and Dan, maybe you can speak to Micah Phillips, if that's appropriate, what he's doing to reach out. You know what I'm talking about, I hope.
Avalon Mutual Aid.
Yes.
So the food bank, there's currently a food bank, and it is at Avalon Community Church. It's Wednesdays from 12 to 2. So every Wednesday, there's some church staff there, we've got a staff person there assisting that, as well as the homeless program at that same time. So Wednesdays at 12 to 2. Micah asked me to read a little bit of a statement, but just in general, I won't read it now. Mutual Aid, Avalon Mutual Aid came to fruition, I think, over the course of the weekend. There was some talk over Facebook about trying to help the community, community helping community, Micah, as well as some others. I think Audra McDonald was one as well that had put in some, some, two cents in regards to it. But it's basically community helping community. It's a hotline that we've set up, and the hotline phone number is 310-780-0938. I'm manning it at the time, for the time being, and we've got 20-plus people that on the community side have said, I've got free time, Avalon Church is involved, the Lions Club is involved, individual community members would like to be able to help with grocery shopping if need be, picking up prescriptions, dog walking if need be, if somebody is not able to get out and get to do their laundry, we could be of some assistance there. So I've got a nice group of volunteers at this point. We'll spend the next couple of days getting this information out in the community, we'll get up to the hospital and get it out to their staff as well, and then facilitate the calls as, you know, as needed. We went online yesterday with a post, we had a couple of phone calls, people just checking it out. We did our first trial run. Bryce was helpful, it was for a prescription pickup, so we've got some logistics set up on how we can handle that. I think he's going to be able to talk at some point about what they're planning on doing at the drugstore as well. But the hotline again, 310-780-0938, and it's up and operating.
Perfect, thank you. Hopefully, that answered the question.
Stuart Finley. Today, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that allows local governments to temporarily halt foreclosures and evictions. Will the city of Avalon adopt this policy to protect its residents?
Can we?
Wake up Scott.
Scott, are you there?
Wake up Scott.
We're going to dock your pay.
I know that it's asking landlords not to evict, to hold off if they can't pay their rent, but when the economy came back, they would still be held accountable to pay any back rents at whatever.
Right.
As far as whether the city can join that, I really need Scott to call, to answer
Okay, we'll save that question for Scott.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Other questions, please?
Scott, the question was, today, Governor Newsom issued an executive order that allows local governments to temporarily halt foreclosures and evictions. Will the city of Avalon adopt this policy to protect its residents?
So under that authority, the city can, if we start to see evictions happening, but that order provides is that when evictions start to occur, or you could do it prospectively, the city can put a halt to all evictions, put a halt to all court seizures using unlawful detainees to evict people out of their homes. Some cities have done that, most cities haven't, but we could put that, if that was council's desire, we could put that on the agenda and adopt that in an upcoming meeting.
Carl Carstens. If you catch the coronavirus, can you, and you recover, can you get it a second time
So the question is about immunity, which if it follows the path of other coronaviruses, then you would be immune to this particular strain. One of the concerns about the increase in mortality in Italy, which again, may be because of they overtaxed their healthcare resources, but one of the concerns is that perhaps the virus mutated, and we're looking at a slightly different strain, which would be a little bit frightening. And so one of the requests is that we isolate, re-isolate the virus from patients in Italy to see if it matches what the Chinese provided us at the very beginning of the outbreak. But the expectation right now is that being infected once will make you immune, and that's the way that we're behaving with regard to healthcare workers, allowing them to go back to patient care after they've been positive. They're allowed to go back after two negative nasopharyngeal swabs, and they've, the vaccines being tested are assuming that you would need an initial injection and a booster about a month later at different doses, and they're looking to see if the antibodies in response to these vaccines match the antibody levels in people who have recovered, with the assumption that if you've had it, you are now immune, and if we can get a vaccine that can mimic that, then we have a vaccine that can infer immunity without you having to go through the illness. So our assumption right now is that, yes, you'll be immune.
Okay, this is a three-part question from Kathleen Carlyle. Can we get tested for the regular flu? Because if we happen to have that, we know that prescription drugs like Tamiflu can make a big difference if taken early.
So absolutely, and in fact, the strategy that we're using is, in somebody with a flu-like illness, is the first test for influenza, because the co-infection rate is very, very low, so if you have one, you likely do not have the other.
And can we still get that treatment if needed?
If she's talking about Tamiflu, then yes. And in fact, there are some experimental medications that have been used for other diseases that we are trying to acquire to use if we end up being stuck with critical patients longer than we'd like to.
Okay, this is a three-part question from Renee. Are there any reported cases locally?
If by locally you mean on Catalina Island, the answer is no. The closest cases would be over in the Los Angeles basin.
Will transportation to the island be on lockdown?
I'm probably not the right one, but there is some concern, because medical staff don't all live here on the island, and so the latest information from this afternoon is that there will be boats every day, but they will start to cut some of the times, and so the best thing is to check the Catalina Express website, because they will be reducing the number of boats.
Will there be a curfew or lockdown imposed on Avalon residents?
Not at this time, no.
Yoli Montano, two-part question. Hotel Metropol has shut down for three weeks. All businesses are going to be impacted. Is local government going to be reaching out to try and help small business that are taking a hit?
If Yoli is asking about financial help, there is a link on our city website that will take you to loans that the government is offering to small businesses, whether you're a profit or nonprofit.
Second part. Who is going to enforce slash update business closure slash other requirements? Who will tell us what to do? We're getting information from news. Local government should be the one responsible to disseminate information.
The first question about who is enforcing, since the order came down from LA County Health yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, now is... Health yesterday afternoon, I believe it was, now is LA County Sheriff's will be the ones that will be enforcing that. The city's authority to enforce anything would be issuing administrative citations of sorts. And then, what was the second part of that question?
We're getting information from news. Local government should be the one responsible to disseminate information.
The most reliable sources is the CDC website and WHO's website, World Health Organization. Those are the ones that we rely on and for our conference calls with them, and that's who I would get your information from. And they update daily and hourly.
And also, we're putting things on the website as well.
Yes. But I will say, Mayor, the city has itself, hasn't been as good as they should be to put the information out. We just have the links there. We're trying to do a much better job at that. I know Jason has really stepped up the game with the Medical Center, and he's been very good about posting stuff, so.
I think, in all fairness, and I want to stick up for the city in this regard, is that, over the weekend, Mayor Garcetti and the Los Angeles County Health Department were talking about having restaurants, bars closed specifically, and restaurants go down to half-capacity. That was a recommendation, and it wasn't until yesterday afternoon that that actually became a mandate. So, the confusion between what was all over the news all weekend and all over Google and whatnot was that restaurants could be open at, with half-capacity and the social distancing of the six feet, but then yesterday afternoon, that changed. And so, the time between yesterday afternoon and the city being in meetings all day and getting its bearings together, trying to get that information out to our community wasn't as easily available. And so, there were restaurants that were open today, and there was a lot of chatter out there on social media. And I guess, in all fairness, I would just say that this, I think, this is changing moment by moment, and while the city's in a webinar or on a conference call, by the time they're getting updated educational information, the mandates have already changed. So, there's, it's been extremely difficult to try to get the information out there. And I think that we all want answers. We, as a council, are getting answers sometimes at the same time as the public. And we all just need to be very patient, because everybody has the best interest of the community. So, please be patient, and please be kind on social media. Be kind.
This next question's for Dr. Davis, from Kathleen Hill Carlyle. How many tests does Catalina Island Medical Center currently have for the coronavirus, and what are they doing to get more?
The testing, up until just last week and the beginning of this week, has been in designated public health facilities, and only within the last few days have we seen private laboratories like Quest Labs have access to the testing. There are a few academic medical centers that develop their own tests, and we're able to offer that, and that's often what you'll see on the news with people driving through and getting tested. But as far as the commercially available tests, it's only been the last few days that it's been available to commercial laboratories. And because there's still less than 100, I believe, laboratories that are even approved to use the test, that Catalina Island Medical Center's lab is a long ways from having a point-of-care test. Such a thing doesn't exist. You have to be a special lab. That being said, we sent our first test to Quest today, and so, that was a, I think, a milestone in representing that now we are able to test. But I want to emphasize that we're using the CDC's criteria, and that it's not something that's available for everyone. And from our colleagues at UC Irvine, even a patient who's intubated on a mechanical ventilator with suspected coronavirus, it can take up to a week to get the results of the test back. So, we are far, far, far from being able to have somebody come in and turn around and say, "You're positive or negative." We may never get to that point with this first wave.
So, before you go, I have a question, kind of. So, let's say I'm not feeling well, but I know, you know, so I go over town and walk into a Long Beach Memorial emergency room. Are they going to basically do the same thing that you would be doing here with us?
I believe so. I don't, I don't think Long Beach Memorial was one of the designated public health facilities that was doing early testing. So, I think they're using the same kind of commercial laboratory. But if you picked, you know, a general community hospital, then they would be sending the test to Quest or another laboratory.
And I can't walk into Quest and say, "Test me."
No.
No, okay.
Okay, right now, we don't have any more questions. Just an announcement, we are having issues with the streaming. We are cutting out. So, I just want to remind people that the full presentation will be available on the website following the conclusion of this meeting. And we recommend, if you have a personal phone, you could also stream there and, you know, use your data.
Any questions from the audience? Okay, comment? Go ahead.
Got it.
My question is about the cross-channel carriers. It's been, I don't think they're doing enough. I think there's still visitors coming over. They're coming over and taking our groceries, and this, I think that that's the start of all this. If we don't have any positive tests in this town yet, what are we doing to avoid positive testing people from the mainland from coming over here? That's, I love everything else, everything else is great. Everybody's doing a great job, but I think the biggest problem, as I was walking up here today, there was still an express boat coming in the harbor. And so, that's our problem. I don't, I think, everybody in the town is taking their precautions, they're staying home, they're, and this is my biggest concern. I see it every couple hours when another ship comes in. Like, what are we doing about that? We stopped the cruise ships a week ago. We've been knowing it's a developing problem, it's a continuing problem. What? I'm shaking just thinking about it, so.
So, Carl, I can tell you this, that we have been in very close communication with the Express, and no, they do not screen like they do with the cruise lines, that had three stages to their, before they process the passenger on the ship. I could tell you that in the next day or so, that I really hoped, and the Express, as well as some other major entities in town, to make some announcements. I was going to say at the end of the meeting that the council can expect to have a special meeting in the next few days, not only to go over our financial information for the community, not just the city, but the community as a whole, and how we plan to go forward. Carl, it is not just as easy just as saying you cannot get on the boat because they are a public transit, and so, we have to do it very carefully and thoughtfully. The safety of the health of this community is utmost, Carl. Literally, everybody in this room is spending their entire days to make sure. You don't see the stuff because we're all behind the scenes to make sure that you guys are safe. I have, we all have the same concern, but we have to do it properly.
What's stopping them from doing the tests? I don't see.
What kind of tests do you want them to do, Carl?
Check fevers. That's a symptom, isn't it? Fevers? You put one of those little radar guns to the head, like people are doing it, we're doing at restaurants over town? Why can't that happen? If you have a fever, sorry, you can't get on the boat. If you don't live here on the island, or you're not a contractor here, coming to the island for a contracted purpose, you have no business being on the boat.
Okay, so, your contradiction right there. So, you're a contractor coming from the mainland, you're still over there, and you could live in a community that there's community spread, and it's okay for the contractor to come over here, though? So, you have to be careful where we're cutting the line. That's what I'm saying.
But I don't think the line has been drawn yet, at all. There hasn't even been.
That's what you think. Do you know, the numbers have gone down drastically. The Express is only communicate, transporting under 200 people, and a lot of those are residents and others that are coming. We do have a big clientele of workers that come on a Monday morning. We are getting very close to making, trying to go forward on that. And that's all I can say right now, Carl.
Okay.
But it is a concern, and we're moving forward.
I only approach the podium because there's a lot of great things being talked about, but the cross-channel carriers is not one of them that's being brought up enough, I don't think.
Carl, I would encourage you to take your comment out wider, to a wider range of the community as well, because in the last week, I could name 12 residents of the island who are traveling, who have traveled and who have come back. And, you know, I think there's a lot of self-monitoring that is happening, and I think that, you know, as we've talked about, if somebody does have symptoms or whatnot, that, you know, here's the plan, here's the protocol. But I believe it's unfair to just say, "Hey, I don't know who that person is, you shouldn't be on the boat, and you shouldn't come over here." You know, it's, the locals, our residents are traveling back and forth as well. Our residents are going over for doctor's appointments, which I'm not in favor of prohibiting that movement. I'm not in favor of prohibiting all movement, especially when we're talking about being able to do essential shopping and whatnot. We can't always do essential shopping here on the island, so if.
I'm concerned with that person that's walking back onto a boat with toilet paper, with our groceries and stuff that didn't belong here in the first place, but they're here and they're getting.
I get that, but we haven't run out of toilet paper on the island. And when we did, the shelves, when there was one dozen eggs left on the shelf that my husband passed by for someone else, the next morning, when I went to the grocery store, the stores were, all the shelves were completely stocked. I mean, Vons has done an amazing job of keeping our supplies, as well as tech hardware.
Let's hope it stays that way.
Well, there were six barges that came in today, and Vons Corporate or whatever, Albertson's, whatever, are really giving us priority, since, number one, it is the only grocery store. So, and you heard the same thing. I chatted with Brian today, just as, they're even sending over products that they don't, we don't even like. The toilet paper they brought over today wasn't stuff that they usually even carry, but they're really making sure that we're taken care of. So, I'm feeling good about that.
And I have one more thing.
This is Scott. Ah, yeah. If I could just make a comment about the city's ability to ask people to stay at home, shelter at home or quarantine. The county of Los Angeles is the only entity that can do that in the counties. The city does not have the ability to do that, which is why you'll see various counties imposing stay-at-home or restrictions on travel. What we can do is we can encourage social distancing, work with the county to enforce their orders, but it's important to recognize that the county of Los Angeles is the only entity that can, quote, quarantine people in the city, or force people not to go over town.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Hi, J.J. Poindexter, Harvard Master. Doc, you made a comment, and maybe I misunderstood it, but you said something about when you have the chest inflammation and stuff for steroids. Does that mean that if somebody's on a butyral pump, do they, should they continue to take that, or did I misunderstand?
No, you heard it loud and clear, and the assumption from the initial experience was that steroids might help, because part of that acute respiratory distress syndrome that the small percentage of patients get, that ends up being the thing that lands them in the intensive care unit and ultimately leads to their death, is part of the immune system gone haywire. And so, one of the lessons that the Chinese and the Italians tried to pass along to those of us in the United States is that they tried steroids, and while it did seem to decrease some of the inflammation, it put them at risk for getting other infections, like bacterial infections, and the trade-off wasn't worth it. So, somewhat to our surprise, their recommendation was to not use those, except for patients who have underlying asthma and COPD, because they oftentimes require steroids to decrease the amount of inflammation, not in the alveoli, where gas exchange occurs in the lungs, but in the airways themselves. And so, in patients with asthma and COPD who periodically require steroid pills and oftentimes are using inhaled steroids on a daily basis, for those patients, the steroids seem to be beneficial. So, it's astute that he caught that. And in response to the last comment, because I've thought a lot about this, when you have a place where the livelihood is dependent on tourism, but at the same time, that's the biggest, or one of the biggest threats, I would almost approach tourists the way that I approach patients, where I assume that they're giving me something or trying to give me a disease, and that after each encounter, at least grab the hand sanitizer, try and stay six feet away, which isn't always possible as a patient, but hopefully, you're not getting as intimately close to the tourists as we would in a patient exam. And then, going home, getting rid of the clothing that you've had on that could be contaminated, and not exposing your family, maybe even taking a shower when you get home. It doesn't have to be something rude, and I hope that patients don't perceive it that way. And again, I think tourists don't have to, but you almost have to take that approach to try to protect the people that aren't there on the front line with the tourists.
Okay.
So, albuterol is a bronchodilator, and it does seem to work for patients who have a lot of secretions. And again, the asthma and COPD patients seem to benefit. Unfortunately, the patients who are in that second phase, who are going through that respiratory failure, they don't seem to be benefiting very much from the bronchodilators that's been tried by our EMS colleagues. And in fact, in some EMS systems, they're forbidding the use of bronchodilators because it doesn't help, but it seems to propagate the spread of the disease to EMTs and paramedics.
Other questions?
We've received two more. Dr. Davis stated he sent out a first coronavirus test today. Does this mean that there is a possibility that someone has coronavirus on the island?
Well, sending out the test is less an indication that coronavirus could be on the island, and more an indication that now the testing is available to us here on the island. We have had patients who have presented in the last week with a febrile flu-like illness, but there's been influenza testing positive. So, we haven't had cases where the thought was that this looks like coronavirus. And so, at this point, I don't think, I think, most of the, I wasn't personally caring for the patient, but I don't think that the thought is high, but enough to warrant the testing. We would like to try and be on the front and, like Singapore, and identify cases, and try and over-identify, and end up maybe with a lot of negative tests, so that we can find those positive cases and let them know and sequester them, so it doesn't spread through the community. That's the tact we're taking, because this is such a unique geographic opportunity here, unlike most areas in California, where it's just impossible to stem the flow in and out.
Okay, this is a two-question, two-part question from Kathleen Hill Carlyle. As noted in a Washington Post article today, "If the number of cases in the USA were to continue to double every three days as it has been, and if social distancing is not ineffective, there would be about 100 million cases in the United States by May." That is math, not prophecy. Could the CIMC doctor reiterate to the people how important it is to isolate?
Yeah, I wish, I mean, I come, I've been a professor for two decades, so my instinct is to sit everyone down and explain how this works, because it doesn't take much for this to run rampant, and there's some fascinating math involved in this. But the bottom line comes down to whether the spread from one person is to more than one person or less than one person. That's the critical number to look at. And right now, in the United States, it's definitely to more than one person, meaning that it's spreading. And whether you double every three days, or five days, or seven days, the countries that have had those kind of doubling rates have seen the disease spread like wildfire and quickly overwhelm the healthcare system, which, for me, is the more important piece, where we're going to see people dying that don't need to die. I can't even fathom numbers like 100 million people infected, because even though the vast majority of those won't be critically ill, or may not even realize that they were sick, that that means that there's going to be tens, if not hundreds of thousands, that are in the ICUs, clogging everything up and essentially overwhelming us in healthcare. But I'll tell you also. But I'll tell you also that if you watch the numbers just yesterday and today, although the number of cases have spiked, the number of deaths has actually gone down a little bit. And that is hopeful because we expected the number of cases to go up this week just because we're testing a lot more people than we were last week. And so we know we're going to see more tests. If that was in conjunction with a rise in mortality, then we'd be in a panic. The hope is that we're just seeing a lot more people being tested and a few testing positive, but that those are relatively mild cases compared to what the patients who have been tested up till now, who have been intubated in the intensive care unit. So if that trend continues and we see the deaths start to drop, even if the number of positive cases go up, that's a very hopeful sign. So you have to look at more than just the positive cases because for the first time, we're being able to test patients that we otherwise wouldn't have been able to test. But when you see a positive case, their risk of death isn't for about a week. So when we see the sharp increase in the number of cases, we have to almost wait a week to see if there's a corresponding jump in the deaths because it takes that week for them to develop that inflammatory syndrome. So this is a critical, critical, critical period right now. This is going to be the turning point, one way or the other. And it's, you know, I know that you see that on the news for people who are trying to sell advertising slots on CNN, but I don't have an interest other than that this is going to overwhelm us, not just at this hospital, but if it, if they're overwhelmed at UC Irvine and at Long Beach Memorial and Torrance and Harbor UCLA, we're going to get overwhelmed with just three patients who require mechanical ventilation. So keep your eye on this ball very closely and do whatever you can here to keep our number, if we ever get a number, less than one, so that even if we do have a few cases, that we nip it in the bud and they don't spread it, and particularly not to the vulnerable patients.
Reports I see say we need seven out of eight people to stay home, avoid public areas or any gatherings for two to eight weeks. Two versus eight is because we just don't know sans testing, how bad is it now?
That was a question?
Agreed.
Oh, okay.
But watch our curve. If our curve starts to level off, then I think, you know, what we're doing is working. And then it just becomes a question of, at what point can you take your foot off the brake, I guess, and allow life to start to return to normal? I can tell you that the Chinese are worried about a secondary spike, in this case, because of people from the United States and Italy and France coming into China with the virus that they have been able to contain, but if they don't maintain good quarantine measures, could get out of hand again.
Okay, this next question's from Val Schaefer. Shouldn't everyone talking today at the podium be wiping the microphone down?
I think we learned that lesson from the center for the, what was it? I forget, the basketball team, who wiped the mic and then tested positive. So absolutely, the first thing I do when I get back to where I'm staying is take a shower.
Wow.
Okay, why is media making the coronavirus such a big deal when influenza and dengue fever are both higher than last year?
That's an interesting question.
So this is, it's an excellent question, and I have to admit that my first reaction a month or two ago was that this was CNN, and I don't mean to pick on them, CNBC, take your pick, trying to make it into a big story. But when you start to listen to the epidemiologists, and if someone's truly interested in the epidemiology of this, I found an excellent, excellent discussion from a British epidemiologist that I could actually understand, who walks you through the math that shows you how close we are to this magical inflection point where things suddenly blow out of hand versus we have it under control. And the difference between this and influenza is the fact that that vulnerable population has such a high mortality that even though the total number of cases may be tenfold less, the hundred-fold increase in mortality means that the ICUs will be full and overcapacity. And unfortunately, I should turn that around and say, why isn't CNN or CNBC every year talking about how we are always close to capacity every flu season? Every year, we get together and try and predict, is this going to be the year that we run out of ventilators? So the public doesn't realize how close we get every single year, and only through the flu vaccine have we been able to keep the disease relatively mild and decrease the transmission rates. And we scratch our heads as to why less than half of people even get the vaccine when it would be such an easy disease to control. But every year, we come close to capacity in our ICUs and we come close to running out of ventilators. So it doesn't take that much more, and it's the increased mortality with this virus that just tips us over that edge. And that's what turns our mortality, which is less than 2% right now, into Italy's mortality, which is greater than 8%, even though the care that they're giving is almost identical to what we would give here.
Mayor, before we take any other questions, we are about 11 minutes over our hard-stop time of an hour, so it's up to the council how they want to proceed.
Are there any more questions?
Currently, there's no questions.
Okay, then this might be a good time to stop. And Dr. Davis and Dr. Amy, thank you very much for coming. I think this is very good, and I'm sure more questions will be coming along the line, but I thought this was extremely thorough. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and let's move on. Oh, announcements or written communications?
I have a few announcements, and the city hall is closed to the public. We are taking, trying to help the public, though, by calls, emails, or snail mail. If you wanted to mail in your vehicle registration, we have a whole list of things that have closed or stopped functioning because of this. And Michael Palmer, when he gets his report later, he will go over a summary of how the city is in that area. And as I said, vehicle registration has been postponed indefinitely. So you have, if you haven't done it already, you have a lot of weeks add where you're going to get a freebie. I have been in contact a couple times just today with Cavalier Express and the freight lines. They, the freight lines has no intent to stop running, so we will continue to receive our goods. As well as I heard that Jad Davey, his flights to the island has increased because of more orders being by Amazon and other deliveries.
That was it?
Oh, sorry, I have one more regarding our election. Today, there was another update on the county website. It's still a neck and neck between Councilmember Olson and candidate Usenya. They are within three votes still within each other. Usenya is ahead by three. The next update would be Friday around four o'clock, usually about 4:02 when it comes in. The only things I feel that we have left after communication with the county are provisional, and they call them the CVRs, which are the conditional voter registrations. So I estimate there's only about 25 of those. Well, I know that that number is exactly the number. And that's according to the county and an update to the city clerks on Monday, that are the last ones that they are counting, are the provisionals.
There's another 25?
There could be, Mayor, they just said-
There could be up to-
The provisional and the CVR ones are the last ones to be counted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, department head reports.
Good evening, council. JJ Poindexter, Harbor Master. We are continuing our safety with this coronavirus. We're not getting on patrol boats, we're not going in confined spaces to put in the diet tablets. We're, Jesse and our patrolmen on the mole are wiping down the handrails with lemon scent ammonia that kills 99.9% of all bacteria. We do that before the boat comes in, and then they'll walk down and do it again after the boats walk out, so, I mean, leave. So we're getting a lot of phone calls, people asking, are we open? Today, we've got several, and it's, yes, we're open, we don't, we don't close. And we advise them that a lot of the restaurants are shut down, a lot of the bars are shut down, the theaters shut down. There's not a whole lot to do, but I think they just want to get out of there going on. So they're coming, they're coming this way. So we had a yacht club this past weekend that came in about 15 boats, so the harbor's open, and I don't think we can shut that down without the Coast Guard being involved in it, so. Any questions?
No, thank you, JJ.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. JJ, are you guys allowing in-person traffic at the harbor office?
Oh, thank you, no. We, we have a sign at the bottom down there, there's a push button, and they, they want to talk to us, they push the button, we come out. And if they need to pay a mooring fee, then we'll write it up and then take the receipt down to them. But our office is closed to the general public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Captain John Hawking. I just want to give you a little update regarding the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff's Department is still responding to all calls. We still have, our lobby is open, the public can come in there. I know the county Board of Supervisors, they closed all county facilities, and for our Sheriff's Department lobbies, they're still open. So I want to make sure, if somebody does have flu-like symptoms, whether it's coronavirus, any type of flu-type symptoms, we can take reports over the phone. We don't have to respond out to your house, you don't have to come into the lobby. That's what we would recommend, is that if you are one of the people that the doctor talked about that's at risk, we prefer that you would call because we don't want, just like the hospital, we don't want the deputies to have to quarantine and then we have to bring other deputies over. The last thing I want to talk about was, in case we needed additional deputies here, right before the council meeting, I talked to our Emergency Operations Bureau, and Air Five, which is our large helicopter, can bring deputies. We have deputies on standby, ready to go for any time I make the call. So if we need them, they will be here, there's no problem with that at all. And everything else, the deputies are doing everything this doctor says, cleaning the facility, keeping a safe distance the best we can, and we really, I hope people listen to this doctor because we want to shut this down. And that's what, that's what the Sheriff's Department, we're always there for you, so just call us and we'll be there.
Great, thank you very much, Captain.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, Mike Krug, Avalon Fire Chief. I just wanted to make one point, it may have come out, and some of the information that's been pushed out is the City of Avalon Fire Department, we've suspended our normal company inspections that we do every year. So that just to avoid the spread and along with all the guidelines, and we'll resume that whenever it's prudent. Do you have any questions for me?
No, you're good, thank you so much.
Before Michael makes his announcement, I just want to give kudos to Michael because he has been tasked with horrendous thing to daily monitor everything and to keep us updated. He is the closest thing we have to a public information officer, and he has his other job duties that he's been trying to get through, but he's done a phenomenal job. And every day we have, I'm not going to steal your thunder, every day we do have these daily calls with, I think there's about 13 people on the call now just to update each other. And he has been doing the agenda and just filtering out all the stuff that's coming from the federal government and the state, so.
Go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I do want to provide an additional update just for everybody. I do not want to read all of the stuff that's happening in the news today, but I do want to distill out some of the most important news that's happening in our county, the recent, recent executive orders and public health orders that have come down, as well as run down the list of what, how that is affecting the city. I also want to acknowledge the fact that, I know Denise had mentioned that earlier, but it's one of the things that we are working on is how to continue to improve the communication. We will be updating the website, please bear with us. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to anybody at City Hall, we're more than happy to answer any questions if you do not get an immediate response. We do also want to encourage anybody who has any questions to please also look at our partners, our community partners. Many of them have done a phenomenal job with keeping up dated information. Definitely the Chamber of Commerce and Bitter's Center, the Catalina Island Medical Center, they have information up there and they post it frequently, and we try to cross-reference them as well. So hopefully, most of this is now on our city website, and we'll try and make this, get this updated at least once a day. So earlier this week, the Los Angeles County Health Officer with the Los Angeles County Public Health issued an order that effectively prohibits all indoor/outdoor, public and private events and gatherings within a confined space and where 50 or more members of the public were expected, are expected to attend at the same time and to require social distancing measures and temporary closures of certain businesses. This order right now is effective between now and at least March 31st. However, they do remain, reserve the right to extend that as the conditions warrant. Right now, a lot of us, I'm sure, are aware, we're kind of on a minute-by-minute, hour-by-hour basis, and the minute you try to send, something else continues to change. So for now, this order is in effect through March 31st. Additionally, this is the first time we've had some additional specific guidelines for events and gatherings of 10 to 49 people. So if you have a mid-sized gathering, the public health officer is issuing specific measures to be taken place. One of them is to practice social distancing measures, and that really is just ensuring that people at the event are separated by a distance of at least six feet. Providing access to hand washing facilities with soap and water or hand sanitizers, we've seen different things come out. They are recommending containing at least 60% alcohol and other conflicting measures that are requiring 70% alcohol. We would advise you to continue to go with the county. We will be following the county guidelines as well as the state unless one of those changes. Posting a sign at the entry of the event prohibiting anyone with symptoms of respiratory illness from attending, this is really critical. If you feel sick, don't even try and come to these gatherings, please just stay home. And then adhering to cleaning and infection control guidance provided by public health. The order also prohibits dining in at restaurants, however, delivery, takeouts, and drive-through is allowed. So no in-person dining, but you can go in and you can pick it up. We don't really have drive-throughs here in our community, but there are some limited options as well to do a delivery. This order also prohibits the following types of businesses where it's common for patrons to be in close contact with each other for extended periods of times. This includes movie theaters, gyms and fitness centers, arcades, bowling alleys, and bars and nightclubs that do not serve food. So effectively, all bars and nightclubs should be shut down. The only time that they should be open is if they do serve food, and the only time they can serve food is if they can do takeout or a drive-through or delivery. The order does not apply, and I do want to repeat that, the order does not apply to essential services and goods that assist people in meeting basic needs. This includes things like pharmacies, places of transit, at least for the interim, like airports, metro stations, bus stations, including our ferry, hospitals or healthcare facilities, schools and universities and colleges, although many of them have taken proactive measures to limit the hours of operation or to limit exposure to their facilities. So they're reducing their model of care accordingly. There is a copy of the full media release and a copy of the order on our website, so you can follow the links there. The city is going to continue to assess the order, and we are working with the chamber and many of our other business community partners to help provide additional guidance and education to our local businesses. That started today, and we're going to continue to do that until we get full compliance. The city is also working with John over at the LA County Sheriff's Department to insist on helping to enforce these bans. Hopefully, it doesn't come to that. Hopefully, people understand the severity and the gravity of the situation and comply without any needed enforcement on that. In terms of local updates, as many of you may have heard already, the city has cut some of our services, so we are temporarily suspending public access to all city facilities. Passive recreation right now at city parks is still allowed, but we are requesting the pub- public, if you do go out and you're outside and you're at one of the parks, please make sure you maintain social distancing at least six feet, and it probably would not be a bad idea to carry any hand sanitizer or wipes. The city has done, we have increased our cleaning schedule, we are out there every single day cleaning all frequently touched rails, playground equipments, sidewalks, our public works crews is out there on Front Street spraying down everything. The good news is there's not a lot of people out, the bad news is there's not a lot of people out, so. Vehicle registration will be extended, I know Denise had mentioned that earlier. We've also temporarily suspended our dye testing onboard all vessels, although Harbor is continuing the education, because we need to continue to be good stewards of the Avalon Harbor waters, and we don't want to have any additional issues once this is all over. There are also some postponements on our residential housing inspection program, just due to the space and wanting to limit close contact with anybody, and hopefully also minimize some of that cross-contamination, and we're going to be adhering to all of the guidelines put forth by the L.A. County Order, for obvious reasons. The other thing too, that I just want people to be aware of, the city is following, and we continue to follow, any and all updates that are coming out from our regional partners, from our county partners, from our state and federal officials. As information pertains to the community, we will try to make a concerted effort to pass that information out, if not through our website, then absolutely through the email chain and through our business partners. One of the things I do want to highlight as a resource, because it was just approved, California was the first to request the Small Business Administration, which is a federal agency for disaster relief, and the federal government just recently gave their approval. Low-interest rate loans are available for both for-profit at a rate of 3.75% and nonprofits at a rate of 2.75%. This amount can, that you can borrow against, can be up to $2 million, and the payback period could be up to thirty years. So there's some additional information on there, I know that's not necessarily the best news, but at least there's something out there for any businesses wishing to look at how they can weather this, especially for the coming months. It is available for any city within Los Angeles County, and there's additional counties that it covers as well, but we do have all of the information out there, and we'll continue to push that out as we hear from it. There are some other things that are happening at the White House, and I just want to do a quick update on that. Earlier today, the Senate was considering, the House passed coronavirus bill, they are looking for some relief packages for individuals as well as for small businesses, particularly those under fifty. So once those kind of get finalized, right now, they've been in negotiations, they're trying to move pretty rapidly on these, but like I said, most of that stuff continues to change, so as they do get finalized, we'll make sure to pass that out to all of our business stakeholders, as well as try and put that information up in a timely manner on our website, so I'm available if you have any questions.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Regarding the residential inspection program that I really think has taken off yet at all, is that true?
We have had a couple internal meetings, the last time we met, we were, it was about a week and a half ago, we were hopeful to start sending out letters, we were starting to cross-reference our databases, I know we were a little bit delayed in getting that up and running, and for that I do apologize, but we were working with Matt and the business light, all of the addresses we already have in that, and we were cross-referencing with some of the property owners and some of the other lists that we have. So we were getting ready to send out the letters to everybody, just reminding them that these inspections were coming, and then we had just come up with a game plan to split people up into three different groups to start that. So we will resume that, there's some stuff that we can do in the background when some of this coronavirus stuff seems to level off, and we can move forward with that fairly expeditiously from there.
So my question is, however, if I am a tenant and I do have a complaint, can we take those, can we do those? Amanda's shaking yes, and you're shaking yes as well.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on any of these fundings that are coming, you said, is any of this money available for cities?
There are some federal and state relief packages that are coming up for government, one of the things that you're going to have before you in just a short while is an emergency proclamation, that will help, should you declare a state of emergency here. Really what that does is enables us to streamline some of this process, to make us more eligible and to ready our EOC, or Emergency Operations System, so that we can take advantage of it when it does come down, but they have, we're currently working with Supervisor Janice Hahn's office, and we'll be reaching out to Eric O'Donnell's office, I mean, O'Donnell's office as well, in order to see what we can do to carve out, given some of the unique characteristics of our community.
Wonderful, great.
I'd just like to note that, thank you, Michael, for that, and that Townsend is one of the contracts that we have, they are providing daily, sometimes twice a day, a consolidated cliff note of everything that's happening with the federal government and the state, and it's just been tremendous help and aidiness.
And Congressman Lonthal reached out.
Yes.
To see what he could do for us as well, so that was good, okay.
Oh, and Herlinda Chico has just joined that daily nine o'clock conference call with us also.
Okay, okay. Is that it for department eight? Okay. Let's go to, I think your city manager, you're done, right? Okay, council member reports.
Wait a minute, I.
Oh, sorry, city attorney.
Just because I'm socially isolated, we do want to add a item to this agenda, it would be a declaration of a public emergency, and designating the city manager as someone that can take emergency actions. The need to do this came up after the posting of the agenda, so if we can add that to the agenda, that would be fantastic.
Yes, we can.
We need a three-fourth vote to do that, so if I could.
Move that in.
Okay, Denise, you can just tell us where, where you want us to put that in.
That will be the last item in general business.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Wait a minute, so we have a motion by only.
Add it.
Please, add.
Oh.
Cindy's a second.
Moved in second.
Call for the vote.
Oh, we need a proper vote.
Well, now, there was something that I.
All eyes.
I'm sorry, there was something that I read, that they said, because we're having meetings like this, we should also do a roll call vote, so the people can hear it. That was on one of those things.
Um, yeah, yeah, that is required, that is required if you do the meeting telephonically, which means if all members of the council phone into the meeting, it's not required of this particular meeting, but you can if you desire for the people that are just listening in.
Oh, okay, perfect.
We have all eyes.
Yes, we had all eyes.
Council, do you all have a hard copy of that added item?
I do not.
No.
You did not get it?
I'll go get you a copy. I can.
Might have been in your box.
Share. I think Matt's going to go look for me.
You want a hard copy?
I think Matt's going to go.
Okay, then we can go to council member reports.
Nothing.
I don't have anything.
I just want to report out that we had a officers' meeting via telephone for the Gateway Cities Council of Government, and we are looking at possibly not having an in-person meeting for April, or looking beyond in the near, near future, but possibly a conference call, so.
Scared goes well.
I think we're just waiting for some additional legal advice and whatnot to make that determination, so.
I would just like to say, this, this is a rough time for the community of Avalon, and for those of you who would, please support local business as much as you can, since there is takeout food available and that kind of thing, whatever you can do to help and to shop local, I'm sure they would appreciate your business. Earl Communications, this is an opportunity for people in the community to speak on items that are not on the agenda, you'll be limited to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
We have received some questions, may I ask?
There are questions and comments?
Yes.
We can take those, yeah, as long as they're not medical questions, because we lost our medical personnel, okay.
They're not. This one's for city manager. City Hall is closed, and it was mentioned that vehicle registration was postponed, but what do residents do if they need to renew their subsidy card for boat travel?
I suggest they call in and they make a reservation with Dudley, so we can take care of you. I know that he has issued a few of them, just by somebody coming to the door, and he's taken out of form, we're just limiting access in the lobby with more, too many public at one time, so they can call and make an appointment.
Okay, the second question is for the assistant city manager. Michael.
Michael.
There's questions for you.
The assistant city manager mentioned bar and restaurant closure, is there any closure of tours and activities, specifically outdoor activities such as zipline, aerial adventure, et cetera?
Right now, I don't believe any formal announcement has been made by any of our partners, however, I would encourage the community to continue to reach out to them and to stay tuned.
And then we have one announcement from Long Beach Unified School District. Lancer parents, we anticipate starting online lessons next week, if your child needs a device for school, please call Avalon Schools at 310-510-0790 tomorrow, Wednesday, or this Thursday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to noon. We are trying to provide quality learning opportunities for students during this closure, and appreciate your patience.
And that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, consent calendar.
We have five items on the consent calendar this evening, three regular ones, and one as the City of Avalon acting as the housing authority and the city council, and one is the Avalon Housing Authority acting as a successor agency to the ACIA. First one is minutes of March 2nd, the regular city council meeting, the second one is warrants for the total disbursement of $1,166,162, and that is from the period of February 24th through March 6th. Third one is two parts, authorize the Los Angeles County Development Authority to issue bonds or notes in an amount not to exceed $20 million, and make or require mortgage loans to finance the development of a multifamily rental housing project in the City of Avalon. Second part is to authorize the city manager to execute the inter-local agency cooperation agreement between the City of Avalon and the County of Los Angeles. Number four is to receive and file the general plan, 2019 status report, and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report for 2019, and direct staff to submit the general plan status report and the Housing Element Progress Report to the HCD. Number five is to adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents in connection with the re-syndication and rehabilitation of real property located at 309 Beacon Street.
Can I just ask a question? Are we still having a planning commission meeting tomorrow? Is the city still having a?
Yes. No?
Yes.
Yes.
There's, there is still a planning commission meeting tomorrow?
No. And it will be treated just like tonight.
Okay.
Okay, council?
Move staff on one to five.
Is there a second?
All second.
Moving seconded, call for the vote.
All eyes.
Number five, I think it is, or six, on is general business, and Amanda's been asked to come give you a census 2020 update.
Good evening, council, this seems kind of anticlimactic after all the coronavirus, but the census, we've been in contact with several people from the census, and of course, a lot of the outreach that the census had planned in order to reach out to the public has now been canceled and changed, so, let's see if we can. That's obviously not what I wanted to do. There we go. So, this is general information, why do we do a census? We do a census because every ten years, we want to count every person that lives in the United States. This drives strategic decisions about programs and funding, and how our government is organized across various counties and states. We want to count everyone, those children of all races, all ethnic groups, even count those little tiny babies that were only born in the last few weeks, so we're just trying to get an accurate count of everyone. In most cities, people will get something in the mail for the census, asking them to respond, that's not how it's going to happen in Avalon. We're going to encourage everyone as much as we can to fill out their census online, or to fill it out by phone. There will eventually be census workers, enumerators coming around Avalon to try to reach those people that have not responded, but you will not be getting anything in your mail that is a form or anything for you to fill out.
If I can just stop there, though, I went to, I was at the library before they closed about doing that, and they said they're supposed to send you some kind of ID number, so you can get in.
Right, Avalon will not be getting those. You can fill out the census online, or by phone, and you don't need that unique identifier number.
Okay.
So here's the thing that's been probably the most controversial, what is the census going to ask you? So basically, they're going to ask you, how many people are living in your home, I'm sorry, I can't read that, what, what the relationship are to the people in their home, how many people live there, and what is your telephone number and your address? The other questions they're going to ask you is the name of the primary householder, which is the number one person in the household, and then what is the relationship of everyone else to that person? They're going to ask you your gender, are you male or female? One of the questions that was discussed at our training was, not everyone clearly identifies as one or the other, so they're telling you, just pick whichever one you identify with the most, and that's the one you select, there's not a third choice. They want to know the age of the primary householder, there are actually two questions that relate to race, they're asking if you are of a Hispanic background, and then they're also asking your race, so there's two different questions that tell about your ancestry. Those are the nine questions that they'll ask about person number one, and then there's seven questions that they're going to ask about everyone else in the house, which is basically their name, their relationship, their age, their birthday, and their race, and their Hispanic origin. So the really important ones that we want people to understand is the questions that they are not going to ask you. They are not going to ask you your citizenship status, they're not going to ask you what kind of visa or work permit you have, or where you were born, or how long you've lived here, or where do you work, or what is your household income. And if you have someone come to your door or call you, and they're asking about your ID or your passport number, or they're asking you for any of your social security number, or they're asking you for any banking information, this person is perpetuating a fraud, and they're trying to scam you, so none of those questions are going to be asked by the census, and you certainly, last but not least, you do not have to pay a fee to fill out the census. So if anyone calls you and they're asking you any of these type of questions, hang up. Some, one of the frequently asked questions is, how is my family member in the military or at college going to be counted? Each of the branch of the services or universities are going to be counting their personnel or students. Is it available in other languages? Yes, it's available in Spanish and twelve other languages, and if you forget to respond, the Census Bureau is going to be making six attempts to reach out to you. They'll be coming and knocking on your door more than once, and we are working with the census, the enumerators that are going to be coming to Avalon to try to narrow down the street addresses where they need to go knock on the door. If it's a vacation home, we don't want the census enumerators knocking on the door four or five times, so we're working with them to refine the list of addresses that they may need to respond to. So they've already started counting people in Alaska, there was a village that they had to go across the ice to get to them, so they had to go early. Right now, people who receive things in the mail will start receiving those invitations. Again, Avalon is not going to receive anything in the mail, but there's two ways that you can go ahead and fill out your census, one is my2020census.gov, and the other one is the telephone number, which is 844-330-2020. And by phone, or on the internet, you can. And by phone or on the internet, you can also get alternate languages that are available. Then later in April, they may, they will be going to senior centers and other group homes, and then in May and July, you'll actually see enumerators probably coming to Avalon. All of this is shifting and moving because of the coronavirus. So we're encouraging everyone, go online, fill out your census online, call and fill it out, and that way, we don't have to worry about people having to come to Avalon and knock on doors in the midst of the other health crisis that we're currently experiencing.
Amanda, sorry to interrupt, but if it came to it, could we put together like a band of phone banks where we're actually calling? Do we have contact details for residences in town where we could call rather than knock on doors?
We do.
Okay.
And I think probably the most useful database would be our commuter subsidy database, because we get that type of information when people are getting their commuter subsidy, and those are the most representatives of people who live here. But I think ultimately, the census is going to be keeping up with who has responded and who has not, but we can certainly work with them to make sure they're not having to knock on doors that they don't need to. And they are still hiring, so if you're interested in working for the census, they still have jobs available. That's it. Everybody fill out your census and wash your hands.
With soap and water.
Any questions, Amanda?
Any questions for me?
No, that's great information, thank you. Miss Thatch went forward.
Okay, Amanda. Okay, Scott, this is your item.
Okay, taking you off, can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, this is an item to introduce in ordinance for the City of Avalon. To restrict, this is the right one, restricting issue of auto wet permits for a certain type of accessory dwellings and the junior dwelling units. This basically means that if people are going to be adding the small areas in the back of the house, we are.
Scott?
Yes.
We're not talking about ADUs, this is the declaration of the local emergency.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about general business, sorry.
You've been sleeping back there, wherever you are.
I did put it under general business, Scott, so you could describe it, and it's our last item of the evening.
Oh, you know what I was doing, I quickly mentioned it in minutes, I'm sorry. So this is a, the purpose of this item is to do two things. One is to declare an emergency, and the reason we want to declare an emergency is it makes the city eligible for state and federal funding that has been made available to respond to COVID-19. So in other words, worked above and beyond what we would normally do, we would be entitled to submit an application for, to get the monies paid back. And so what all the departments are doing is tracking the time that they are spent on COVID-19 responses, so that at the end of the day, we can submit a bill to the state and federal government to get reimbursed for that. The second thing is, is to grant, to activate the emergency powers under your municipal code, to give the city manager certain powers that are extraordinary during the time of this, where she can make purchases, make some personnel decisions, manage the city in light of the COVID-19 emergency. She can also, is able to kind of take some health and safety measures, as long as if she takes those, she calls a council meeting as soon as practical thereafter to have the council ratify those actions. So we're basically giving Denise emergency powers during this time, as well as setting the city up to be able to recover its costs from the federal and state governments. Most cities are doing this, and so we encourage you to adopt this declaration.
Great. Are there any questions or comments? Maybe we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Call for the vote?
All eyes.
All eyes. So I would just like to say, be very close, a meeting that Tony Zeiler has moved back to Beverly Hills with his parents. They're concerned about his health and him being here by himself, so until further notice, Tony will not be sweeping our streets. So Tony, if you can hear us, good night, and you are going to be missed. Meeting adjourned. Are we turned off?